Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the 2021 School Committee Year. I hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable holiday. And open the meeting with a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardelo?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica? Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Present.
Ms. Sarni?
Yeah.
Mr. Abraze?
Here.
That's eight in the affirmative, all present. Next business is the election of Chairman and Vice Chairman. I open up the meeting to candidates or whoever would like to present somebody as a candidate. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate our colleague Frank Parker for Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination and a second to nominate Mr. Frank Parker as Chairman. Do I have any other?
On the nomination? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert.
If I may, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Sorry, on that nomination, if I might?
Yeah.
I just wanted to put forth Frank as a candidate for Chair. As Frank offers the rare combination of having a breadth of institutional and procedural knowledge while committing himself to continuous learning. And over the first year on the School Committee for me, Frank's been an incredible mentor teaching the new members not only how to use procedure, but how we can use it to allow new voices and perspectives to be heard and to contribute effectively to our scholars and our families. And with his expanded role in the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Division Leadership, he has branched out even further to serve not only our body and our constituents, but every single student of the Everett Public Schools. And...
With that, I'm going to ask once more, are there any other candidates that anyone would like to nominate? If not, I'd like to have a roll call vote on Frank Parker as Chairman for the 2021 School Committees Year. Mr. Abraze?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that the nominations for Chairman be closed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close nominations in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a roll call vote on the election of Mr. Frank Parker to the seat of Chairman. Roll call vote.
Mr. Barrows?
Mr. Parker?
Ms. Cardelo?
Parker.
Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Parker.
Ms. Murray?
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Panerisi?
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Parker.
Ms. Sarni?
Frank Parker.
Mr. Abraze?
Mr. Parker.
Eight confirmed votes. Mr. Parker, you are the Chairman of the School Committee for 2021. Congratulations. It's all yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Panerisi. First of all, to my colleagues, it's an honor and a privilege to bestow this honor as Chairman for this coming year. And I accept it and I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we pursue, you know, our values. I also would like to thank the voters because obviously without their continued confidence in me, I wouldn't have this opportunity to serve in the School Committee. And lastly, a big shout out to my family. I'm sure Lina's watching, but more so my wife Kathleen, who probably serves in this capacity just as much as I do because she has to deal with it every day and the support she got and she gives me. It's just, it's needed and I welcomed it. And thank you, Kathleen, for everything. So just quickly, some remarks. I think of this year looking at, you know, four pillars, and that's equity, advocacy, accountability, and autonomy. Equity, as we pursue educational justice to make sure that, you know, every student has access to the same, no matter, you know, what their background is, what their level of education is. You know, equality is one thing, but equity is when you actually have it in hand. And we have many inequities that we need to, we need to address, change, and make it for the better. The next thing would be advocacy, and I mean that on a local, state, and federal level, advocating for, you know, what we need to succeed in working with our partners, whether it's the City Hall, Representative McGonigal, Senator DeDomenico, and of course, our colleagues and our newfound friends over the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendent. Accountability, I mean that more so from a fiscal standpoint, making sure that our budget is being spent efficiently. We're acting nimbly and we're constantly looking for continuous improvement, ways to maximize every dollar that we get, whether it's the taxpayers of Everett or the Chapter 70 money that we get from the state, who's our biggest partner, about 7% of our budget. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is autonomy. We've heard over the last month or so that, you know, we've been described as just another department. We are not. We are far from just another department. We are not the Everett Public School Department. We are the Everett Public School District. We manage 10 buildings, responsible for 7,200 kids and close to 900 employees. We represent 42% of the budget. So with that comes autonomy. Autonomy that's been defined by the Ed Reform Act. Autonomy that is spelled out along with our roles of Mass General Law, which far exceeds the three bullet points within the Charter. And we will protect that autonomy and we will advocate for every dollar we think we deserve, whether it's local, state, or federal. And that's what I hope to bring to you. I understand my role as the chairperson is the servant of the body. So I'm your servant. I will work with you and together we will achieve even more because these are certainly exciting times for the Everett Public Schools. And thank you for your support. But with that, I'll open up nominations for Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Almeda, Barrows?
I'd like to move to nominate Mr. Abraze to be the Vice Chair of the School Committee this new year.
And second?
Okay, I have a motion that's made in second to nominate Mr. Tom Abraze as the Vice Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the motion, I'd like to have more to say later on, but on Mr. Abraze. But one word that I could define Mr. Abraze is leadership. For the past two years, he has brought this committee to, not only a high level, but to an award-winning level, as we have recently received an award, a statewide award from the Mass Association of School Committee. His leadership in leading us to a very difficult transition from a previous superintendent to hiring in an honest and legal process a new superintendent that we have now. He has suffered many misinformation, miscommunication, lies, and he has stood up always to make sure that this body was working hard to protect and to bring our families, those that we serve, always ahead of anything. So with that, I'd like to, you know, make sure that he continues along with you and this body to lead our committee and with that, our schools. And that's why I am proud to nominate him as Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Are there any other nominations? With that, I entertain a motion that nominations be closed.
And move to close nominations for Vice Chair?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion that's been made in second to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and we will call the roll to elect the Vice Chair by using the person's name. Mr. Celestin?
Mr. Barrows?
Ms. Abraze.
Ms. Cardelo?
Ms. Abraze.
Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Abraze.
Mr. La Monica? Ms. Murray?
Mr. Abraze.
Mr. Panerisi?
Mr. Abraze.
Ms. Sarni?
Tom Abraze.
Mr. Abraze?
Tom Abraze, thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Abraze. So we have eight in the, eight for Mr. Abraze. Congratulations, Mr. Abraze. You are the Vice Chairman for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, if I could just briefly state, Mr. Barrows, thank you for the kind words. This was, again, sort of a surprise, not as much of a surprise as it was two years ago when I first became Chairman. But I just take this and I think for the nine of us, I just look upon the positions that Mr. Parker and I now hold. I just look upon it in terms of, Mr. Barrows mentioned the award-winning. And I'm one, and Mr. Parker is one of nine people. That one thing we learned when we went to those, the class there on that Saturday. But I just look upon this, you know, I mean, cynical people, I guess, could look at it and say it's same old, but I prefer to look at it that for the past two years, if it's not broken, why fix it? I think we've had some great things occur and I think the best is yet to come. And just like Mr. Parker said, look forward to serving you. And again, I joked back when that Frank was the Tom Hagen of the School Committee. I hope I can now take that role from Mr. Parker and serve all of you in the same way. But really appreciate it, very honored, and look forward to 2021 as a Vice Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraze. Before we move on to the next order of business, I'd like to recognize and having Mark as being present for me, Call Di Maria has joined us. Thank you, Mr. Di Maria. So the next order of business is the oath administered to the Secretary. Madam Superintendent, can you please come forward? Okay, so if you could, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
You have to say your name. I?
I, Priya Tiliyani, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties encumbered upon me.
As Secretary of the Everett School Committee to the best of my abilities.
As Secretary of the Everett School Committee to the best of my abilities.
In understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations.
And understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Everett School Committee.
Of the Everett School Committee.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
In ordinances of the City of Everett.
And the ordinances of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Madam Secretary. Okay, the next order of business is the adoptions of our rules and regulations. As you know, there's been some amendments over the past year. You all have a copy. So I would entertain a motion.
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the, which I would say the new subcommittees, right? Amending our rules and regulations with the new subcommittees that this body has worked on, reviewed, and approved in previous meetings.
Right, so the proper motion in this case would be to adopt all the rules and regulations, which does include the new subcommittee structure.
So with that, I will add that you've not only approved the ones that we have changed or created, but you approve all the rules and regulations of the Everett School Committee.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion in the second. So, Mr. Celestin, if you can please call a roll call vote, please, for the adoption of rules and regulations.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, so on the matter of appointment of subcommittees, I entertain a motion to lay that on the table.
Make a motion to lay it on the table.
Thank you. So, and the reason being is I will, you'll be contacted with the new subcommittee structure and you can come back with your wish list. Of course, Ms. Sarni, you're going to be on all committees, just like you were last year because we know you like that. So I don't, you don't have to respond, Cynthia.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
So the motion has been made and seconded to lay the appointment of subcommittees on the table. Roll call vote, Ms. Celestin?
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. So, so eight a's, zero n's, you have laid on the table. So with that, if we could, can we please all rise? I'm sorry, I should have did this earlier. And salute the flag with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
America and to the...
To the Republic of which it stands.
A nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Number three, reading the records.
Move to waive the reading of the records and place it on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the reading of the records and place it on file. A roll call vote, Ms. Celestin?
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, the motion has passed eight to zero. And now, public comment. Do we have anybody on the line who would like to participate in public comment?
As of now, no one is waiting.
Well, I'll make a motion to open public comment.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sarni. A motion that made in second to open up a public comment. I think we can just, everybody, just give me a thumbs up. We'll be okay. All right, I see eight in the affirmative. We have approved to open up public comment. So therefore, do we have anybody looking to participate in public comment?
No one right now.
Okay, let's just give it a few more seconds. Maybe somebody heard us talking and might be trying to sign on.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you. And just as we're waiting, I didn't know if we could take this opportunity to, for the viewing public, to explain that public comment has been expanded to accept email comment. So if it was on our agenda, if anyone would like in the future to participate in public comment but are unable to make the meeting, they're able the day of to email Ms. Celestin.
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. So what we'll make sure that, at least moving forward, is that we give Ms. Celestin's information when we post so they can email letters and public comments. So that'd be great, anything to engage more and more people. Okay, so at this point, I believe no one is on the line?
Right.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
The motion is made in second to close public comment. All those in favor, just thumbs up. Okay, we have closed public comment. Number five, report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening and Happy New Year to everyone here and those of you listening at home. You know, I think everything that could be said about 2020 has already been said last year, like all of you. I was thrilled to turn the calendar on to 2021. And, you know, while our collective fortunes might not change overnight or in an instant, we are hopeful that our immediate future is far brighter than our immediate past. And I am excited to give you some of the updates that we have, not just from our holiday season, but also in what we see coming ahead. So to begin our first meeting of the new year, I do like those before me, just want to take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Abraze. The Chairman's two-year term did conclude on December 31st. And, you know, the forced cancellation of our meeting on Monday, December 21st, denied him that chance to conclude his term from the Chairman's seat or for me to give this personal note back then. So I just wanted to take this time to mention what a pleasure it has been to work with Tom during my first year as Superintendent. I cannot thank him enough for his guidance and support as I transitioned into this role. He has led the School Committee through, as you all mentioned, a very tumultuous and unprecedented period with both skill and decisiveness. And under his leadership, you know, the School Committee, like you all mentioned, was awarded the All-State School Committee Award by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And that's no small accomplishment. And like each and every one of you, he really has been instrumental in helping the Everett Public Schools endure the endless variables and challenges and obstacles that have been posed over the past year, especially by the pandemic. So, Tom, I know I speak for all of us who didn't get to speak as well when I say thank you for that. I also want to congratulate our new Chairman, Frank Parker, not only in being voted our new Chairman here, but also in being recently elected as the Secretary Treasurer of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Division Two, which includes 53 school districts in Massachusetts. I had the honor, like tonight, of being there on the evening that he was elected. And I was very proud to hear the amazing things that his colleagues around the state had to say about him when he was nominated and elected. So congratulations to him and thank you to him as well for all the support that he has provided over the last year. So now for our regular update. Unfortunately, before we proceed, I did want to recognize the tremendous loss of, in the Everett Public School community of, on December 23rd, of Christina Trovel, who was a beloved student at the Devon School. She passed away after a long and very courageous battle with complications from a second lung transplant. You know, Devon School Principal Brian Wallace described Christina as being, you know, a quiet student who loved to laugh and had a very witty and dry sense of humor. You know, she engaged people with her kind, unassuming, and friendly demeanor. She enjoyed journaling, drawing, and singing. Our thoughts are with Christina and her family, Christina's family. She will be missed, but never forgotten. And so I just wanted to take this moment to have a brief moment of silence in honor of Christina. Thank you all. So tonight's report begins with the announcement of an exciting partnership with a program called Technology Goes Home. It is an established, greater Boston-based organization with a proven track record of helping people access and utilize digital tools to overcome barriers and improve the quality of life of their participants. So, you know, this has been a longstanding organization that I have actually been involved with in the past, but, you know, their mission is more important now than it ever has been. So TGH programs are directed at those without technology at home with a focus on individuals who are from low-income households, have limited English proficiency, or are living with disabilities. So of the households that TGH serves, 75% have incomes under $35,000 and 30% of adult learners are unemployed. Nearly 50% of TGH learners are from immigrant families and 85% are people of color. So the EPS will offer a program for parents and guardians with students between the ages of three and six and the second for those with students in grades one through 12. So under our partnership, we will be able to offer the courses in English, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish. So the first phase of this partnership will be the training of our personnel to become TGH-certified instructors who will then lead the classes and deliver the content to our families. So before I give you some more information about TGH, I just wanted to thank my central office staff for working tirelessly on making this partnership a reality this school year. Special thanks to Deputy Superintendent Kim Tsai, Chief Financial Officer Anu Giant, English Learner Coordinator Anne Argar, and Budget and Grants Director Shirley Pang, as well as Executive Associate of Project Implementation, Adeline Celestin, for recognizing that TGH is ideal for the EPS community and then pushing very hard to work with TGH to get this initiative crossed over the finish line. So in teaming with TGH, we are taking steps to fulfill our core value of empowering our community by creating meaningful and collaborative relationships that promote excellence for everyone in the EPS, including our parents. So from a practical standpoint, the TGH program will help our families to stay continually engaged in their students' education. Taking a closer look at the partnership, the TGH Early Childhood Program is for families with young children between the ages of three to six. The course is taught using iPads by early education specialists who are certified TGH instructors. Designed for the parent or caregiver, the curriculum is built around educational and social-emotional learning apps that focus on early language, literacy, and STEAM skill building. So families get to practice those early learning strategies and discuss the challenges and opportunities in parenting with technology. So families who successfully complete the course will then receive a cost-free iPad to keep. The program for grade one through 12 families encourages parent-school engagement and gives the student and adult caregiver an opportunity to learn together. So the curriculum focuses on fundamental digital skills and topics such as using Google Apps for school and work, finding apps and websites for learning and play, tracking grades and attendance online, finding after-school and academic programs, and accessing web-based family resources. So families successfully complete the course. So families successfully complete the course, then will receive a cost-free Chromebook. Again, that is theirs to keep. So each course concludes with a graduation ceremony, which, from my past experience with TGH, is a genuinely special moment for the families. And I look forward to all of you getting to experience this as well here in the Everett Public Schools. Obviously, I will share further updates on this as we roll out our process in the coming weeks and months. So since we last met, the Greater Boston League postponed the start of winter interscholastic sports. So our athletic director, Tammy Turner, and her GBL colleagues continually are working to formulate a plan that will eventually lead to our student athletes returning to action at some point during the balance of the school year. So a meeting is scheduled tomorrow, so we will have more information about this at our next school committee meeting. What I can say, you know, without question, is that all parties involved have the very best interest of our students at heart. You know, the GBL's initial plan for winter sports was incredibly detailed and thoughtful, which is why I endorsed it and you approved it. But local health officials did make the recommendation to postpone based on their analysis of available data and their consultation with state agencies and medical professionals. And that was also seen in other districts as well. So the GBL got together to collectively make this decision to support all of us as a collective group. And if everyone continues to work as diligently and collaboratively in the future, I know that that will only serve to benefit our students and get them back to their activities in a way that is, you know, safe and sustainable. Also, just a quick reminder to our families that if your student is planning to try out for basketball or hockey, to please complete all of the necessary paperwork, including a current physical, to send to the EHS Athletic Department. And any questions that anyone has can be directed to our athletic director, Tammy Turner. So the district has, as we have mentioned before, taken possession of enough Medify air purifiers for every classroom and main office in our district. So they are already out in the classrooms. They are being utilized in our special education classrooms and by teachers who have elected to work from their classrooms. They're also in our offices. Mine was there today when I came into my office. So we are also in the process, not just of using those, we are also still in the process of procuring high-powered air purifiers that kill germs as well. So we expect to receive those shortly. Later tonight, you will be voting to accept a significant donation from the Disabled Veterans Camp Corporation Scholarship, which will allow us to continue to present $1,000 scholarships to deserving Everett high school students every June. So I just wanted to give a special thanks to City Councilor and Everett attorney Fred Capone, who has meticulously handled the logistics of ensuring that the scholarship is secure. He represents the Everett Disabled American Veterans Chapter 51. And thanks to the longtime efforts of members such as Richard F. Horgan, Richard Connolly, John Troy, and, and there's another one that I'm forgetting. I'm so sorry. The chapter presents a scholarship to an EHS senior who is planning to attend a four-year college or university to pursue a career in medicine and/or the health sciences. The trustee pursuant to the terms of the trust recently decided that coordinating the scholarship fund is best left to the Everett Public Schools, which can then carry on this tradition every June by awarding what is officially called the Disabled Veterans Camp Corporation Janet Connolly O'Neill Memorial Scholarship. So the late Janet Connolly O'Neill, as you all know, was a beloved Everett educator and a former Webster School Assistant Principal. And as of the end of the year, we have received donations from the DAB that brought the total of the scholarship to a little under $23,000, or $30,000, sorry, ensuring 23 years of uninterrupted scholarships to deserving students. So I just wanted to again thank you, Mr. Capone, and the DAB for your dedication to the Everett Public Schools. Later tonight, you will also vote to accept a, oh, sorry, a significant donation from Exelon Generation and Everett Kiwanis Club for making very generous donations to our students in time for the holiday season. So actually, we may have already voted on those. Sorry, these donations were used to help support the events that are being held at our elementary schools that were held over the holidays. So Exelon, for the third year in a row, graciously donated 300 winter coats, which are pictured here, to our students through a collaboration with Operation Warm, while the Kiwanis Club generously gave the district 480 sets of hats and gloves. It was a pleasure to meet Archie Gleason, finally a person. I've gone to email him before. He is Exelon's Northeast Region General Manager, as well as several dedicated Kiwanians when they made these donations to our students earlier this month at the Lafayette School. So I also want to thank our principals, our teachers, and staff members for leading donation efforts in our individual schools. So, you know, obviously, the gratitude that we are extended, you know, to the countless people, businesses and organizations. I haven't listed all of them, but there were so many that generously donated to us during the EPS holiday season. So I want to take this moment to thank all of them who made all of our holiday activities possible. And continuing with the theme of wonderful partnerships, I would also like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the Everett Bank and its President and Chief Financial Officer, Richard O'Neill. The bank, which has a long tradition of supporting district and our community, presented 1,000 gifts to the Adams, English, Kavarian, Lafayette, Parlin, Webster and the Whittier Schools. A big shout out also to Mayor Carlo Di Maria, who facilitated this donation on behalf of our students and helped to organize this fantastic presentation at Everett's bank location on Broadway. So in the photo above, Mr. O'Neill, the mayor, and myself are pictured with Principals Chris Barrett, Dennis Lynch, Teresa Trangali, Dave Brady, Michael Lucas, and Alex Nauman, and the Everett Teachers Association President Kim Auger. You know, the longer I have the pleasure of serving as superintendent, the more I, you know, get used to the tremendously loyal partners we have in businesses such as Everett Bank. You know, that by no means suggests that I will ever take these relationships for granted. You know, I'm constantly overwhelmed by their continued generosity, and I just want to thank them and all of our generous donors. So on to more logistical aspects. The state is requiring students, I'm sure you've all heard, to receive a flu vaccine now by February 28th, 2021. Ensuring that our students receive a flu vaccine is an important step in reducing flu-related illness and the overall impact of respiratory illness during the COVID-19 pandemic. So this rule does apply to all students regardless of whether they are participating in remote learning or attending in-person classes. So our school nurses have been contacting families to remind them of this new rule. And I would like to take this moment to remind our community about this important change. So the city does offer free flu vaccines, which you can schedule by calling 617-394-2255. In addition, the website www.vaccinefinder.org is a good source to consult. We also have all of the pertinent flu vaccine information posted on our EPS website in our District Updates section under the Resources tab. So before Christmas, we had sent out a flyer in our primary languages about the flu vaccine requirement as well, and school-by-school contact information. So we are asking all of our families to please email fax or mail their students proof of flu vaccine to their school nurse. So our safe and socially-distanced holiday drive-through events were simply fantastic. They were, you know, glowing examples of the tremendously impactful partnerships that do exist between our schools and the Everett community at large. I, again, like I mentioned before, time does not permit me to thank everyone who made these celebrations so joyous and so successful. But from volunteer organizations to PTO members, to staff and administrators, you know, there were just, there are far too many people to recognize and to thank for bringing joy to our students and families. And while there is no question that we distributed a significant amount of toys, gift cards, goody bags, books and other materials, I think the best part was definitely the holiday drive-throughs where there were opportunities for, even though brief and socially-distanced, genuinely happy interactions amongst our teachers, students, parents and colleagues. Some highlights actually include the Parlin School Walk Through Event, which attracted approximately 450 students, each of whom received a gift card, hot chocolate, a candy cane and a book. And all the Parlin community raised more than $3,500 for its holiday events. And if that wasn't enough, actually, the school raised more than $13,000 from various individuals and businesses for the Parlin PTO. So that was really incredible. The Lafayette School staff raised more than $2,200 to buy gift cards for families in need. The Kavarian School PTO organized a massive toy drive in which every student who attended the event was given a new age-appropriate toy. At the Whittier School, toys and gift cards were distributed to families in need, thanks to the, again, aforementioned Everett Bank gift, as well as the generous annual toy donation made by chiropractor Dr. Brian Leahy. And at the Madeline English School, a large contingent of staff members who were on hand to greet students and families included a teacher, Jamie Beauregard, who dressed up as Belle from Beauty and the Beast. And in closing, a special thanks to the Everett Police Department, including Officer Eric Williamson, who was our Santa Claus at the Kavarian School, as well as Department of Public Works and everyone from the city who supported our holiday events. So switching to attendance, I did want to give you a quick update on our latest figures. There have been no significant changes in recent weeks, which is, you know, good unto itself. As the 62nd day of school, more than 5,600 of our students have an attendance rate of 90% or higher, including 2,321 students who are boasting perfect attendance. The district's daily attendance average is 93%, which is equal to historical data from the past decade. And also, I know I had mentioned previously that we did have 13 students who, earlier in the year, had not logged in to our eEducation. We have been continuing to track contact with those families of students who were struggling, and we have actually been able to reengage a student. There were several students, as we suspected, who were being discharged because of moving. So there were about seven of those. So now we are in a, only a handful of students that we are still working with, where we know all of their respective scenarios, whether it is they have had to relocate because somebody in their house has COVID, they need a new Wi-Fi hotspot. So we're doing whatever we can in order to make sure that just those handful of students who are remaining are able to access the education that they need. So the next two parts of our presentation will be in regard to our COVID-19 report, followed by an update introducing fully hybrid learning model for our school. So at first, these may seem a conflict with each other just for the simple fact that, you know, positivity rates continue to be very high in our community. In fact, our metrics do continue, like many other communities, to demand caution. But while we cannot ignore or wish away, you know, unfavorable conditions, we certainly can develop a plan, and we have been all year, that is ready to activate as soon as the circumstances allow. So our energies are focused on opening more classrooms as we move into the second part of the school year. You know, our optimism remains in check and making sure that we are putting all safeguards in place, but it is not deterred or shaken. So shifting to the numbers themselves, the graph on the left shows Everett's daily incidence rates and the city's total cases and percent positivity. So since we were last together, daily new cases in Everett climbed above 50 per day, and the percent positivity now tops 10%. So the Centers for Disease Control does recommend reopening schools when case rates are below 20 and percent positivity is below 5%. So in this next slide, as we continue, these, again, various slides and charts reemphasize the concerning coronavirus trends in our community. So going back to summertime, this graph shows the persistent increase in total cases on the right Y-axis, along with how many tests the city has administered on the left Y-axis. I would like to send a special thank you to everyone at the local, regional and state levels who have administered testing programs and lead contract tracing efforts in our communities. You know, regular and reliable data are not insignificant considerations as we do try to find some genuine peace of mind during this crisis. The next two slides show how, over a two-week average, Everett's percent positivity continues to increase. So this chart also includes a 14-day testing average that took an expected dip over the holiday week, which is good. Again, the key line here, though, is the gold one that signals a climb to over 10% in positivity. Relatedly, this chart shows the 14-day case count and percent positivity. So the almost 800 known cases in Everett is no doubt surpassed by asymptomatic carriers in our community. Members of the Everett Public Schools community should continue to get tested, wear masks and socially distance until they are vaccinated, which will hopefully be soon. In the meantime, we, you know, we are not losing hope or resolve and encourage anyone else to do the same. You know, every smart health and safety decision that we do make today, we do believe will pay dividends in the future. So no sacrifice is too trivial to ignore. And we just want to thank everybody for keeping up their vigilance as time goes on and even through the holidays, which I know is especially challenging for everyone. As of Saturday, January 2nd, the total number of confirmed cases in Everett stood at 5,449. All of us are anxious to see this line drop and flatten out, and we are hopeful that this will be the case as we move away from the holiday season. I do applaud the countless people, again, who have led the COVID-19 prevention efforts in our community, as well as brave and selfless medical professionals, hospital staff, frontline workers and our essential employees. Again, Everett is not in this alone. There are now 191 Massachusetts communities in the high-risk category with our city ranked at number nine. So this is just, again, another reminder to us to continue to stay vigilant about using the best safety practices at all times. And a look at the statistics from our Department of Public Health showed that December saw 250 Everett residents under the age of 19 diagnosed with COVID-19. So obviously, this is the age group that covers our student population. And our response team reminds us to pay close attention to the numbers in this age group as we roll out any plans for more in-person teaching and learning. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as many of you may have already heard, has introduced new standards for structured learning time for districts using fully remote models. So these valuable new guidelines do not require any significant or burdensome adjustments on our part, which is wonderful. Specifically, DESI has been requiring districts to provide a minimum of 40 hours of synchronous or face-to-face instruction over two academic weeks. And none of the days during that period can be fully asynchronous. So we are already exceeding this requirement at Everett High, so no changes are needed in grades nine through 12. In grades one through eight, we will meet this requirement by adding 30 minutes per day of live synchronous instruction with a teacher into our eEducation schedule. So adding that into what is already our developed schedules. So this change is not mandated for kindergarten. We are exploring adding a little bit of synchronous time for kindergartners, but we want to first consult with our teachers and principals to determine if that is appropriate. So we are still working on doing that. So this schedule change will take effect on Tuesday, January 19th. And families will hear directly from their teachers and their principals, who have been given the freedom to collaborate to best utilize these minutes based on their regular communications with each other and the detailed knowledge they have about their students. So to use one example, the 30-minute block could be added to a math and/or ELA class to more closely mirror the 90-minute blocks we use during in-person instruction. Or in grades one through three, principals are also exploring dedicated 30-minute social studies blocks, while at present, social studies is in many instances included in a writing block. Another option is to keep the schedules the same, but simply add an equal number of minutes to each existing block. So these 30 minutes of synchronous instructional time would be taken from the asynchronous virtual learning block that currently exists at the end of the day. So again, all of these examples of changes would be within the current schedules that our students and families have grown accustomed to, so that it wouldn't be too much of a disruption to what our families are already doing. You know, the bottom line is that, you know, we believe that the addition of this virtual face-to-face time will be employed thoughtfully and meaningfully by our teachers with the result being added time to cover more of the essential content for each grade level to allow more opportunities for teachers to check out how well their students are understanding the material and to provide additional activities for deep mastery of concepts. So as we design a blueprint for hybrid learning, our foundation will be based on four considerations, which can be described as safety, best practices. which can be described as safety, best practices, technology, and staffing. So safety comes first, and much of what we are doing is a continuation of the plans that we've already made at the outset of the year. So we've taken possession of Medifi air purifiers, purchased air filters. We are exploring the purchase of stronger, or we are purchasing even stronger air purifiers. We have the necessary masks and gloves we need, hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies, and an effective disinfectant spray. So we will also be utilizing the Binax Now rapid testing, which I mentioned previously, which is a cost-free product being offered by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Defense. So this test has been proven to be fast and reliable, especially for large organizations such as ours. So our goal is to finalize the, these details within the next two weeks with the hope of starting to transition some of our grades into hybrid by quarter three. So we are still in final conversations about this, obviously with the ETA and with our various subcommittees, but our thoughts right now are that we would be able to start at the start of quarter three and to, instead of going hybrid all at once, our health advisory did recommend that we, we take a more slow and steady approach. So we would potentially start with K to two, our sub-separate classes, any who are not already back, and, and perhaps our seniors, and, and then transition from there, so that hopefully by the end of February, we could be fully transitioned in. So these are our thoughts right now, or the current conversations that are happening right now that should be finalized very soon. Up next is the honing on, bet, in on best practices. So to begin, we have reached out to our virtual learning leaders for recommendations on how to best transition from fully remote to hybrid. So we will be implementing the lessons we've learned from the in-person Special Education Services at the Deppens and the Lafayette Schools. On a small scale, we have tested the equipment we have on hand to, to literally see how it works during a hybrid class to make sure we have everything we need. Since our e-education model is already in place, we do have the option to pilot hybrid learning at certain grade levels, and like I mentioned, for certain cohorts of students. So this will give us the chance to implement, review, and kind of refine each phase of the plan. We have surveyed our teachers, too, to help determine the feasibility of various programs. For example, it is unlikely that we may have enough qualified teachers and instructors to restart our CT programs at Everett High. So we are making plans to expand classes and programs in, in order to make sure that we do have all of our students accommodated. We are also positioned to expand classes and programs for special education students and our English learners. On technology, what, we are far down the road. For this, I wanted to thank all of you for supporting our initial efforts to put a digital infrastructure in place in August. So your leadership has allowed us to purchase Mac laptops for teachers, Chromebooks, iPads for students, while outfitting most of our classrooms with a desktop computer speaker system and an interactive whiteboard. And so because of this, we do have a foundation upon which we can build these hybrid classrooms. So final pieces to the puzzle include multidirectional speakers, so that students who are participating on Zoom can hear their classmates who are in our classrooms, and purchasing upgraded versions of the software Pair Deck and Near Pod, which can then foster interactive instruction by helping teachers utilize the products they already use, such as Google Slides. So by doing this, teachers will then be able to work with software they're already comfortable with to create the best possible hybrid environment. On the staffing front, we are hiring long-term substitute teachers, and we are utilizing a pair of professional recall list. We are also interviewing for various announced technology staff positions that we can better support school leaders and our educators. And we are also looking at a dedicated professional development day to help our teachers prepare for hybrid learning. So all of this will be held up by the strong foundation we have built in remote learning. You know, again, you all have the foresight to support our approach, which I can't thank you for enough, which has enabled us to meet the specific demands of each e-education. And we do believe that our teachers and staff are positioned to merge their, their natural teaching skills and abilities with their digital repertoire and that they've honed since the beginning of the school year in order to embark upon our hybrid model. So how do we accomplish this? And, and how do we put these ideas into action? So this slide sort of gives you an overview of the major cost considerations associated with the implementation of the core aspects of our hybrid plan. So first and foremost, we have to make sure that we have the staff necessary to meet the needs of any and all students for both parts of a hybrid model. So we must be prepared to hire long-term substitute teachers and paraprofessionals to account for staff that might take leaves of absence instead of returning to their classrooms. Additionally, staffing needs will be determined in part by how many students elect to continue with remote learning only, which in turn, of course, impacts the composition of our classrooms. And as you all know, if students and families do opt for full remote, we are, you know, required to give that, even if we are in a hybrid model like other districts around the Commonwealth. So we're trying to figure out what, what are, or have been working on, what the cost implications are for that, especially when it comes to staff, staffing. Up next are our transportation costs, which we can base on past invoices as a starting point, but we must also account for the fact that we will require more buses to allow for social distancing. And last but certainly not least are the materials we need to make sure our students and staff are safe while we wait for the pandemic to be eradicated. So as we switch, switch slides, we can take a closer look at what we believe to be the budget impacts for going for reopening in a hybrid model. So taking a deeper look at this hybrid plan, these line items total a little more than five point one million dollars. So this includes all of the must-haves we need to safely reopen. So as you can see, this is a list, this list is straightforward and very much anticipated, given the realities of the pandemic. So these are the materials that we will need to use continually to facilitate the repeated and regular comings and goings of staff. So this list envisions one addition to our team, who's a person who will serve as the district's COVID response safety liaison. So we do not view this hiring as an extra or a luxury. We actually have a thick new layer of essential guidelines that need to be followed across all buildings at all times, and it's a responsibility that will only expand as more students return to school. Already, you know, the staff that we currently have are stretched very thin, making sure that they are following all these guidelines, implementing them with the contact tracing, working with, you know, the different staff. So we would need to hire a dedicated person who would be able to take all of that on as, as all of our students start returning to the buildings. In our experiences with the e-learning centers and at the Deppens, Lafayette, and Webster Schools, we have shown that issues do, you know, come up that demand attention simultaneously as well. So, you know, current administrators and academic leaders who are assuming some of these responsibilities right now will need to return to a more normal workflow as we do have, you know, hybrid back in place, which is why that would be necessary. So in this next slide, so this next slide gives you a breakdown of the costs associated with staffing, transportation, and other needs for a return to hybrid. So you will note that there is some overlap between this cost analysis and the EPS investment plan that the school committee endorsed late last year. So we firmly believe that these investments are connected and that there are elements to our overall budget plan that are vital to a successful and efficient return to school. So the items that are highlighted in yellow are not a part of our investment plan. So of this group, the largest figures are the one point three million dollars to hire forty long-term substitute teachers and the one point six million dollars in transportation costs. So it's just, you know, a, a quick note before we move on. You know, we have been talking a lot about the budget investment plan, and I just wanted to clarify, because I feel like there are some misconceptions around this investment plan and the original purpose of it. So when we came up with a budget investment plan that we presented at the School Finance Review Commission and gave to the city, that was actually in response to us asking for the four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar reimbursement. And we were asked, well, if there were extra funds, or if this is now extra money, or you have extra funds in special education transportation, we want to know what you're going to be spending it on. And we do internally have sort of this vision for the whole child that I presented at our last school committee meeting for how we are making investments, and we have tiered out the investments that we would like to make over time, knowing full well that we are not going to be able to make them. So when we turned over that budget investment plan, it was to show that, you know, in the case that there are funds that can be reallocated from line, one line to another, we do have a holistic, whole-child approach for how we are going to be spending those funds. It's not going to be spent willy-nilly, or at a, oh, what do we think we need right now? No, we have a very comprehensive plan, you know, that is based on our vision of the whole child in Everett, and that's how we would spend those funds. Never did we anticipate that we were going to have a lot of extra funds, though. So again, that budget investment plan was just in, in a response to that ask for what would you do if you did have extra funds? I feel like that has sort of turned into this narrative that we are going to have extra funds. And so I kind of want to clarify that that is not the case. In fact, with a move to hybrid, and especially the sooner that move is, the hybrid model, and, you know, this can be checked out in other districts as well, is far more expensive to run than either the remote law model or a full in-person model. So the, these line items that I've presented to you are some of the anticipated costs for returning to hybrid, which again, does end up being more expensive and things like, you know, long-term subs, and, and, and then there are unanticipated, you know, costs that do come up that we're trying to anticipate as much as possible by working with districts that have already started their hybrid models. So that's where we do have some benefit to their expertise by, by being able to kind of predict. But again, none of us know what, what the end of the school year is going to look like. So we, um, so again, I just want to really separate those two things, because that was, again, just an ask to show that, yes, we are going to spend, if there is even one or two or three extra dollars, and, and I even cringe at the term extra, because we're, this is all within our bottom-line budget, so it's not extra. These are Everett dollars allocated to Everett students, or students, dollars add, allocated to students, that it would just be how are we reinvesting the funds that we had already allocated to them to make sure that we're doing so strategically. Unfortunately, because of the addition of, you know, a hybrid model, we don't believe that we are going to have, you know, this grand, you know, surplus of funds that, that it seems that others believe we might. And so I just wanted to really reiterate that, because I feel like our, our presentation of the investment plan was in the, in, in, in response to something we were asked about what if, or, you know, but that was only in order to get back the reimbursement, to show that, no, if any of those dollars that are reimbursed are somehow extra, which we don't believe they will be, we would have other smart places to invest them. But again, we do not believe that that's the case. And so the hybrid model is going to be expensive, and we are trying to make sure that we are going to expend every doll, dollar to not only meet our basic needs in the hybrid model, but to also, yes, continue to invest in our students in a way that is strategic, that is smart, and that does then meet our eventual mission to support the whole child. And then finally, I want to bring your attention to the Mass General Law regarding the creation of a stabilization fund. So per state law, school districts can appropriate funds to a stabilization fund to pay for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs for special education out of district tuition or transportation. So later tonight, Mr. Parker does have an item calling for the school committee to establish such a reserve, a question that all of you will have the chance to discuss. But first, I believe it will be helpful to just introduce some of the basics of a stabilization fund. So under state law, the balance of such funds cannot exceed two percent of the annual net school spending of the school district, which for us would be a maximum of approximately two point two million dollars. And there are meaningful advantages of doing this. So first, it protects against mid-year layoffs or cuts due to an unexpected surge in mandated and immediate special education costs, a scenario that has actually disrupted this district in the past. Second, a reserve fund potentially bolsters a municipality in securing the best possible bond rating. Third, the fund can be established in a way that makes the money accessible only by a vote of the school committee and the city council, so there are checks and balances. Lastly, some communities in the Commonwealth have agreements that call for Medicaid revenue to be transferred into a school stabilization fund. So as I said, there will be time for you all to debate and question the merits of this proposal. From my view, it, it does make sense. You know, many people in the community, including members of the School Finance Review Commission, have expressed a strong concern about unforeseen expenses and developments. So while this is a lot of laudable concern, it is also true that there is no way for a school district to predict every variable that might reveal itself during the school year. But still, this is a prudent way to meet the city's financial concerns while ensuring that the, we are making the best possible outcomes for our students. So thank you. Does, I will now open it up for any questions.
Okay, there was a hand earlier, Ms. Lambert, was entering up earlier.
My question was answered. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Okay, Ms. Sonny.
Thank you. Mrs. Taliani, can you explain, on your slide, you had extra substitute teachers saying like forty, and then saying, because some of them may not come back? Are they, are the ones not coming back, are they collecting or getting paid?
So we have been working with the ETA to determine as much as we possibly can, which of course we can't, not until we actually start, which teachers would not be able to return. To your point, yes, because of the regulations that are in place, and again, it is very in-person, individual, person-to-person, and based on the state guidelines for leaves. So these are people who would be granted leaves and be able to take their sick leave for the most part. So yes, to your point, those substitute teachers would be filling in for teachers who are receiving a salary.
Okay. And also, is that also including with the paraprofessionals as well?
So the paraprofessionals, you know, we're trying to, to figure out different ways that we can support our staff. So, so paraprofessionals, yes, would be for those who are taking leaves, but also we are trying to look at other models from other districts to see if there are ways that we can leverage our, our paraprofessionals to, again, support if we had, for example, one of the things that we're looking at is a teacher who might be teaching remotely with a staff member in class. So I don't know if that is going to be part of that final rollout, but that would be for paraprofessionals for long-term subs, but also who could be supporting in that way as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barron's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent, for the presentation. So your, let's see if I got that right. The, the goal for a hybrid model would be for the month of February? And end of February, like that's, that's the goal now?
So again, we're still finalizing, and so communications will go out to make sure everybody is aware of the final plans, because we are meeting with the health advisory, and we do need to work with the ETA. But it would be our goal to try to, by the beginning of February, transition some of our grades into hybrid with, you know, the ideal of being able to transition everybody, and by the end of February, again, you know, we are hoping that we are going to see a huge surge after the holidays, but at some point, too, we do believe that we need to, and I know that this is the conversation that's been mimicked by everybody and by the, the health, the health advisory, but also by the, the ETA as well, is that we do know we, we need to make moves to get back sooner rather than later. You know, I don't, we, I don't know that we can continue to, to, to wait. And so how can we do so and bring back our students? So rather than coming back all, you know, a hundred percent of our students, or fifty percent of our students, a hundred percent of the time, how can we transition that in slowly? Watch how our numbers, just in the same way that we watch our e-learning centers, and see that we can slowly and steadily bring back students, especially with all of the safeguards that we have put in place, which I do feel really confident in, and will continue to put more in place by the start of February. So more official communication after we, again, we have to have a lot of stakeholders sign off on this, but that is the current discussion that's being had.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
May Dear Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and happy new year to everyone. May you all and your families have a healthy and, and a, uh, healthy and happy new year to all of you. Madam Superintendent, I sent you a bunch of questions. I see C D Chairman, Tom, Posey, Tom, and maybe you can share them with the members of the school committee. Just one question, do you know now what additional dollars you think you need for fiscal year twenty-one? Is there a, an amount that you think you need above what you have now to fulfill?
No. So as, as, as we've previously stated, we are not asking for anything above net school spending. That's what we had originally planned for. We're going to, we are going to work within. But we are still really hoping that we'll be able to. But we are still really hoping that we'll be able to get our FEMA and CARES reimbursement that, you know, we would get the funds from the Devon's lease. So so again, those were the conversations we were asked where we were kind of told, well, you're going, you can get that money out of the specialist education transportation line. There are going to be all of these extra funds. We didn't believe there would be, but in the scenario that there were any extra funds anyway, we anywhere, we wanted to show that, because I know that hasn't been the case in the past, that we do have a strategic way of spending those dollars. Never was it our intention to ask over net school spending. That's been our messaging all along. We are just asking for the reimbursements and for the things that we actually had already planned for receiving back. So that's where we start to get into into a bit of trouble is that, you know, if we're not getting the dollars back that we thought we were getting back, then, you know, I mean, if if you're asking what we're asking for, then I guess we'd be asking for $471,000. Might be one line item, another 581 for the Devon's lease. Like we, we would just like those. And then we are going to do our absolute everything, even with a hybrid model to work with them in that.
So are you looking for a million dollars above net school spending for this year to fulfill 21's budget?
So we're looking for the reimbursement back, the 471,000.
I know you get sometimes confused about that reimbursement, but that reimbursement, you know, as we all know, the whole process with that reimbursement. So it is it has now been put into free cash. Are you so are you looking for a million dollars out of free cash to go to the school budget for fiscal year 21?
Well, here's where we get the tree, because I think you get confused about that money. So So this year, it would be considered above net, yes, because this is this year, you're reimbursing funds from last year because it did go into free cash. So absolutely. However, I'm still talking, if you don't mind. And the reason that you received those dollars again is because of the receipts and the information that we gave you. So yes, while this year it would be considered above net school spending, it is not. And the 581 that we would like reimbursed back from the Devon School Lease is actually money that's not allowed to be part of net school spending. So that's why we're asking for that because currently, you know, the city would otherwise not be meeting your obligations under net school spending requirements.
And that's all new news to everybody, every single one of us on this screen and every single member of the city council that never realized that the funds could not be used to pay the Devon School Lease. I think we're all, and I can probably say this, and I can think everyone here on the school committee can agree that we always thought that that was a reimbursed, that was a an amount of money that schools could 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 use as part of their formula of spending tax dollars on a lease. And I think we all know now that after three years, that is no longer allowed. But there that is, I know we want to talk about the Devon School Lease and and I don't want to take too much time regarding the Devon School Lease. And I think we want to, I know, have a formulated plan regarding the revenues and the costs associated with the Devon Schools and how we can figure out how we can really make that payment and continue operating that school rather than sending our children, whatever population of kids that use Devon School out of district. We don't, I don't think anybody wants to do that. In the, you know, the, so you're saying that if to to your plan for fiscal year 21, I know I laid out a great amount of questions, your your plan for 21, that if you were to receive a million dollars in revenues from the city right now, that you would finish out your fiscal year without asking the city for any more additional dollars?
So again, and and I appreciate very much too that you mentioned that, yes, this is the first time that I have brought that the school committee and the city council are aware of the Devon School and how it is allowed to be spent, which is why I don't totally love when somebody tells me that I'm confused because I think I'm bringing, you know, a considerable amount of expertise with me and the people on my team. And so, you know, yes, again, what we are asking for is considered over net, but it is what the schools are entitled to. So yes, the 471 plus the 581 would be a little bit over a million dollars. And that is what the the school district assumed we were receiving. Because again, those couldn't be part of the 471 was the reimbursement and the 581 can be part of net school spending.
Okay, I
Oh, and also to your point about the questions, I did start to review them. And I will say that, you know, I I'm having a little bit. So there were many questions on there that, you know, and I I think what what we'll do is we can, because I got them at 4:30 to include in this presentation was unable to make sure all of them were answered. That being said, there were some on here that, you know, like number of positions in EPS, you know, we have 871, but a lot of them seemed very clerical, seemed like things that I think you guys should already have access to. There were also several that we've actually discussed in the school committee meetings, such as, you know, our IT and what our plan is for internal versus vendors in IT. And and you know, again, I I'm and this is again, something we can talk more about at the School Finance Review Commission. And I think that I would like to, to your point, send those questions to the school committee because again, if we're not asking for extra dollars, which we're not, we're asking for again, the Devon's lease, we're asking for the 471 reimbursement, then I'm just like a lot of these questions to see seem to be falling under the jurisdiction of of the school committee and the bottom line budget. So I'm I'm a little bit and I, you know, I'll, we'll, we'll we'll take some more time to look through those questions. I think I, you know, I do want them to be answered as much in public as possible. So I will make sure that we answer them. But again, I think a lot of them have already been answered. So I also don't want to belabor some of these points for our regular, you know, viewers.
I will, I will yield before Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Mr. Caprese and then Mrs. Murray. Mr. Caprese.
Oh, well. Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know, maybe it's because I'm not the chairman anymore. I did not receive the questions. I just relooked through on my phone, then I don't know where they went, but unfortunately, I didn't get a copy of them.
Yeah, I apologize. I I thought you and the council president were in receipt of them both. Maybe Frank, did you get them? I don't know. We wouldn't know you were the president. So I I apologize, Tom. I'll make sure you you all get them.
No, no problem. Not, no, I just, I just want to let you know that I yeah, did not ignore them. I did not see them. Mr. Chairman, through you to the superintendent, just a question, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into the works, but I've got a question about the requirement of the the flu vaccine. I've been a little stunned over the past week or so when I've been talking to people about the actual COVID vaccine and I've been a little stunned at the fact that many people I've talked to don't plan on taking advantage of that if and when it becomes available. In in terms of the flu vaccine, if a student were not to get the flu vaccine, I mean, what 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 are we going to do about that?
So that is a wonderful question. My our understanding right now from you know, again, this the state who are working with on this is that they would be able to still take advantage of remote learning. So that is our understanding as of now. Again, how this is going to change and evolve over time, I'm I'm sure. But again, this is one of those years where we actually do have the remote learning option. So that would be my understanding.
Right. And appreciate, like I said, I've just, I know I've spoken to Alan about this, but I says just my take on it. You know, if the COVID vaccine gets available, give it to me yesterday. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people I I bumped into that I casually have said that. And there's people that have absolutely no desire to take it until or get it until it's I don't know, proven to be 100% sure with no side effects. I mean, I don't know. Again, with stuff like that and with thought processes like that. Again, I I just look at everything. I appreciate your presentation. It just appears like everything we prepare for, we have to be prepared to change or adjust to. Okay, let's, yeah, we're hoping for February, but you know, let's see what happens. Obviously, fingers crossed. But again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mrs. Murray, to Mr. Panerisi.
So I guess I guess I wanted to first, as an educator who's already back hybrid, talk about the fact that it's it's a stressful position to be in with the numbers climbing. And I fully support the fact that some of our students need to be back in buildings sooner rather than later, which is why I personally, despite the fact that I probably could have gotten medical leave to stay out, chose not to. And that's because the the children that I see every day do need to be in school. It is a better place for them than being at home. So despite the rising numbers, I'm not opposed to the move to start bringing back children sooner rather than later. But also because of the rising numbers, I I just want to reiterate the point that was made in the presentation that we should do it slowly and carefully and move without fear of moving backwards if we find that we've moved too quickly forward or the health matrices change in a way that makes it less safe for us to do that and or not only to move backwards, but also to stall and wait and give things time. I'm glad that we're not talking about bringing back children and staff into the buildings immediately following the holiday. I think it's wise to wait and see how tests are going to roll out now that the holiday season is over. We saw a spike after Thanksgiving. I I anticipate a spike now. But again, with that being said, I also can see that, you know, it's getting to the point where enough is enough and we can't wait forever. It's it's starting to become a problem. To that end, being in classrooms, I am well, first, I want to say that I'm starting this new year, Happy New Year, everyone, assuming best intentions and believing that the city council, the school committee, the mayor, the superintendent, and the entire Everett Public Public School staff can all work together in collaboration to do everything we can for the kids in the city of Everett and that that's what we're all trying to do and it's what we all want to do. To that end, much like my colleagues, I will fight for every dime I believe belongs to the kids. I believe that's why I'm sitting in the seat. I believe that's why all of you are sitting in the seats. And that's what I think we, you know, we are the wardens and the stewards of their money. It's not our money. To that end, I am very reluctant to be as sure as the superintendent has seems to be in this moment to say that the reimbursement money alone will definitely be enough. I I'm less sure of that. Every time I'm in a building a hybrid, more and more expenses seem to pop up. The longer COVID goes on, the more and more expenses seem to pop up. I would like to be optimistic. I would like to for the taxpayers in the city as I know the mayor would like to, as I know the superintendent would like to, as I know all of the government officials in the city would like to. I would like to keep us at net school spending, whether you're considering the reimbursement money as net school spending or above net school spending. I'd like to stay within that window, much like all of you would, but I'm not ready to bet my children on it. I I just believe that there are unforeseen expenses and I believe that, you know, while it's easy to say, well, we don't have a football budget because there's no football right now, or oh, we don't have this budget because we don't have this right now. The amount of price gouging that's going on in the world around the equipment that's required for COVID, the amount of things that keep popping up, I just, I just want us to be hesitant about making public promises about the demands around keeping our kids and our staff safe. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Panerisi.
Okay, so I'm just I just had something on the on going back to our health issue here. And I agree with with Dana Murray that these companies are gouging us. I hate to say it. They gouge the hospital. They gouge companies on the PPD equipment. I mean, they're they're inflating the prices like crazy and it is a hefty cost when you look at what's involved. Second of all, just on a note about the mandatory virus, the flu, the flu shot. It's just funny this year because the hospital also made it mandatory for all employees to get the flu shot, but this year, we're not seeing the flow. It's amazing that what masks are doing this year, and it's the year that they make it mandatory that everyone gets the flu shot. And right now, just by wearing masks, the flu has we're hardly seeing it. It's crazy. It's just but it is a good thing. And I think if you get the flu shot, it helps minimize the effect if you did get but it's just amazing to go on an at note how it's 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 rarely being seen this year because everyone's wearing masks. That's how much it's actually put a dent in the in the flu this year. Just a health note out there. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, Mrs. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Madam Superintendent. And so I know that with some of the federal approvals that have recently come down as well as state, what has changed as far as grants or I don't know if Mr. Hyant is would better be able to answer that because I know there have been a lot of changes as to what is acceptable for grant reimbursement this time versus what we did in 2020.
Yes. And not only that, what I will say is that we're also seeing some other and one of the things that we are doing because to Ms. Murray's point and Mr. Panerisi's, I I I do agree. I I'm very nervous about this year. But I am willing to lose sleep and apply for grants and do whatever we've got to do in order to make sure that we can, you know, meet our obligations to the city. You know, I I would love for that to also be a a two-way street where we're doing our best on our end to not, you know, burden the taxpayers while also, you know, receiving, you know, to your point, this would be a year that well above net school spending would be what I think is required. And and that's not even what we're asking. But I I do think that this is a year, if any year, that our students do deserve more. And that's why in that budget investment plan, you saw social emotional support and all of those things that we'd like to give to our students that we have no intention of actually being able to fill because we're not going to be asking for that. And that's unfortunate, but that's where we are because again, like I've heard more than one time, you know, there are a lot of other crises in Everett that need to be attended to. And I'm trying to, and my leadership team is trying to be as sensitive to that as possible. But yes, if you're asking for what we really need, I think we need well more. I'm just trying to get what we thought we would originally receive. I do, there have been changes and but to your question, there have also been other grants that we're currently applying for and other, you know, areas that we're trying to make sure we're making up for these expenses. I do think Ms. Giant may be the best person to answer your questions about the changes, though.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to invite Ms. and the giant before the body?
A second.
The motions were made in second and to with Miss Giant, all those in favor, somebody saying hi. So move, welcome, Miss Giant.
Thank you, Mr. Ian. And so I know that there have been some changes, some things have been excluded. I didn't know if anything was hopefully added as to what's reimbursable and what grants are available for school districts. You're muted.
Sorry about that. So right now, what we've been doing on a monthly basis is that we've been submitting for reimbursement to the city. Anything that we have been purchasing that's FEMA eligible or CARES eligible from the city side. So we did get reimbursed. I forget the dollar amount, but I'll I'll look it up while we're speaking. But the last two months of reimbursements, we did get back from Mr. Demus because that money, their CARES funding has run out. So the last two months, we had submitted about $600,000 worth of reimbursements that unfortunately cannot be included on the city's CARES funding side. There are very few, there's the there's extreme limitations now on what is FEMA reimbursable. So that $600,000 worth of reimbursements that we were hoping to get would be maybe reduced to about $100,000 or $200,000 that Mr. Demus could include in the next round of FEMA reimbursements. However, there was, there is a new stimulus bill that has just passed. And with that, we would estimate that we would be getting another round of CARES funding. We don't know what the timing of that would look like. But if that does come through, that would include less restrictions on what we could put onto those funds. less restrictions on what we could put onto those funds when when that comes through. So that would include some, you know, we could put things like mental health, summer programming, after-school programming, as well as any of the items that are currently eligible under any of our federal grants as well. So that would be extremely promising if that comes through.
Thank you. Those may have my question.
Right. Any other questions of this giant? Okay. Well, lastly, we'll not excuse you, but customary thanks for letting you stick around in case there's other questions throughout the meeting, therefore we have to call you back up again. If you don't mind.
Of course.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of the superintendent regarding the update? Ms. Ms. Murray, Mrs. Murray?
Just really quickly, and this is, I I'm pretty sure I understood what you meant. But just in case anybody out there is a parent and listening, when you said to be fully back by the end of February, you mean fully back in a hybrid model by the end of February so that every child is getting some in-time learning. But that that wants to participate in in-person learning, but not fully back to school as we all know and love it. Or don't love it depending on who you are, correct?
That is correct. Yes. Thank you for making that clarification. So when I meant fully back, I meant back in the hybrid model. It's that originally we had planned to go all hybrid all at once, but I think we have to transition hybrid in by grade band now.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. I think we can move on to next item.
Great. Thank you so much. And before I move on, I did remember the ones that I had forgotten from the DAV scholarship. I'm so sorry. So it was Millie Cardello. How could I forget? She's right here and George Desidaria. So so item number two is in regards to the approval of our HVAC contract. So the current contract with ENE did expire on December 31st, 2020. So this contract would begin on January 1st, 2021. So five companies requested the RFP, but only ENE submitted a bid. So the bid price is $44,517 per month for the first 18 months to align with our fiscal year through June 2022. And it carries the same monthly price through a second optional year. So this new contract calls for additional filter changes, calls for the contractor to provide the filters at their expense, adds artificial intelligence to help with the efficiency and the operations of our systems. And during this pandemic, you know, air quality tests have proven that our systems are operating well. So as a result, we would recommend that we award this contract to ensure that our systems are as continue to have remained as efficient as possible during this pandemic time. So this would also allow us, you know, 18 months too, to solidify any internal options that we may be exploring while still assuring that our systems operate efficiently right now during this crucial time.
And any questions of the superintendent on this matter? Make a motion for favorable action.
Second.
Okay, motion made for favorable action and seconded to approve the HVAC contract with ENE for the next 18 months. Roll call vote, Ms. Celestin?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, so therefore we have seven in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We have approved the contract.
Wonderful. Thank you. So item number three is the approvals of the approval of the Open Architects contract. So tonight we are requesting your support for the next contract with Open Architects to continue to develop stronger systems and supports for our long-term financial success. So as you may recall, over the summer, Open Architects presented their initial findings and supported the implementation of a new position control process. While we welcome in a new year and look forward to a new normal, the pandemic has exposed the need for districts to have strong financial systems and ongoing analysis and insights. So this need was exposed two years ago too with the task force report. You know, we need to make sure that we are utilizing every dollar we have and directing it to the areas of most need. So the needs of our students and staff are changing and we need to have the financial and data insights required for an organization of this complexity. So our goal is to ensure that we have the systems to provide district and school leaders with the information they need and to create the controls and processes to ensure our financial resources are managed correctly. So ultimately, our budget should support, not limit, our district's vision. So as we've discussed in the past, all too often our staff are working on our financial systems when in fact the systems should be working for them. So critical analysis and developing key insights into how we manage our current year funds and future investments take far too much time for our limited staff's already overburdened schedules. Finally, we need to solve the gaps in our current systems by filling them with new systems or complementary systems to have the data that we need. So at a future date, I also anticipate coming to you, as I mentioned before, for a request to invest in a new and or upgraded system. In the meantime, we do need support for this undertaking. So the contract that you receive with Open Architects will give us additional capacity and support to improve our financial systems and to provide the valuable analysis and insight that we need as we look ahead to closing out this year and investing in future years under what we believe will be a new normal. As we saw this past number, this past summer, Open Architects did identify financial savings and recommended supported and supported the implement implementation of best practices such as the position control process. They also provided an initial roadmap for how we could improve our financial systems. And that short-term support will allow us to bring in their expertise to implement these new supports and systems without having to make more permanent investments in additional staffing outside of the classrooms. They're also the ones I I will credit with the the support in identifying some savings in our salary lines and how we fund them as well as identifying the the Devon's lease and and the fact that it should be a municipal costs. I do, Seth Racine from Open Architects is also here as well in case there are any questions. He and I are both available to answer them.
Ms. Sarni, question, Mrs. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Through you, through the chair, do we have a contract price?
Yes, the contract price, I believe that you should have received was $160,000. That was also in our budget investment plan and I think it was on this evening's slides as well.
$150,000, is that what you said?
$160,000.
$160,000, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. I'll move to favorable action to approve this contract.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion that's made in second of favorable action for the approval of the Open Architecture Contract. Ms. Weston, roll call, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Seven yays, zero nays. We have approved the contract for open architectures. Next item of business, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number four is to request approval to accept the following FY21 grants. The IDA Special Education Program Improvement Grant for $3,682, the Early Childhood Targeted Special Education Program Improvement and Safety for $37,447, the Safe and Healthy Schools Grant for $10,000, and the Coronavirus Relief Fund CBR School Meals Program for $39,026.57. And that particular one will be used for additional meal expenses up until December 30th, 2020 that were created as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll make a motion to accept the grants.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in seconded to accept the grants of items four. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, so we have seven yays, zero nays. We have accepted the grants as presented. Next item of business, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So item number five is for respectfully requesting the acceptance of a donation of shirts from the Kiwanis Organization. So there was actually one tonight and there was one previously that were the jackets. So each year, the Kiwanis Organization purchases holiday gifts for students in the Life Skills Program at Everett High School. So this year, Kiwanis purchased 20 long sleeve shirts for these students. So the shirts were delivered to the student's home by the Life Skills teacher, Ms. Michelle Duchette Tagliarino.
Make a motion to accept the donation in a letter of thanks to the Everett Kiwanis Organization.
Okay, there's a motion made in seconded to accept the donation of the shirts in the Kiwanis Organization and send a letter of thanks. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Celestin?
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, 70 yays, zero nays. You have moved on the acceptance of the shirts. Next item of business, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number six is the acceptance of of the aforementioned Disabled Veterans Camp Corporation Scholarship of $1,000 with the full amount donated being $20,944. Since this amount was included on the agenda, we actually also received an additional check in the amount of $1,545.70, bringing this total scholarship amount to $22,489.70. So I wanted to make note here and and respectfully request to accept the full amount of $22,489.70 for the scholarship fund.
Can you repeat that number again, please?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to amend the scholarship amount to be $22,489.70 to accept the donation
second.
in a letter of thanks.
Okay, so we'll take the amendment first. So motion made and seconded to amend from $20,944 to $22,489.70. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. And if I can ask a question from the chair. So Madam Superintendent, so the $22,489, are we going to manage that like we would a student activity account?
That is a question of Diane's. So I'm glad she's still here.
So Ms. Giant, here we are, we don't we're actually going to manage not only the distribution, but hold on to this money. So are we going to manage this like we would a student activity account?
So it will be housed in a separate scholarship account. So I'm actually meeting with Mr. Norman at Everett High School on Wednesday to talk about the various scholarship accounts. So this would be housed as a kind of a sub-account under that.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we have a motion that's been made seconded to accept the DAV corporate scholarship of $22,489.70. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. So 780 nays, and that also includes a letter of thanks to all those involved on the on the DAV. And thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. So item number seven is the acceptance of 3,500 adult masks, 4,000 youth masks, and 550 air purifiers received from DESI.
Make a motion to approve and accept it.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second is a favorable action, accepting these items from the DESI. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, 780 nays. You have passed and accepted these items. The next item of business, please.
Item, item number eight is the acceptance of a $50 donation from Everett Supply Hardware to be used toward during the holidays.
Make a motion to accept the donation and a lot of thanks to the Everett Supply Hardware.
Okay, motion made in seconded to accept the donation from the Everett Supply Hardware Company. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, 780 nays. You have accepted the donation from the Everett Supply Hardware Company. Thank you, Mr. Latanzi. Next item of business, please.
Finally, item number nine is the notification Medicaid reimbursement in the amount of $632,327.51. So I would like to note that this agenda item was posted as an acceptance of the Medicaid reimbursement. But these funds are reimbursements for expenses the district generated and subsequently submitted claims for. And we have since received notification about the anticipated release of funds to the city treasurer's office. So I asked for a motion to amend the language from approval of to notification of since the city will be getting these funds, not the district.
And could I have that?
I'll make a motion to change the wording as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion was made in second to amend. Item number nine from approval of Medicaid reimbursement to notification of Medicaid reimbursement in the amount of $632,327.51. On the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Okay, so on the the matter, I think this is just for informational purposes only at this point. Okay, any questions on on the reimbursement, the reimbursement process? Okay, so just as a matter of record, you know, these re, again, it's reimbursement, it's money we spent that goes in the general fund. We, as a school committee, on record, the Massachusetts School Committees referendum that we were like, these matters moving forward to go directly to the school districts, not to the city's general fund. So just bring that up as a, as a point of information. All right, thank you. So now we have items submitted by school committee members. Number one being potential COVID testing sites solely for students of residence with proof of residency required sponsored by Ms. Sarni. Ms. Sarni, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you very much. The reason why I put this on because I've had a lot of complaints that parents and children are going in long, long lines in our own community where we having so many people coming from all over different cities, which I understand we have to provide that. But I feel that we're also putting them at risk with being around a lot of other people coming from all over. And I want to try to see if something could be in place for the Everett students and the teachers and the parents of the Everett school system. If they can have testing sites set up for them. And I'm not sure if the superintendent is aware or know anything about this and if she could answer this at all. Through you, through the chair, if if the superintendent can answer this at all.
About whether or not we're we're trying to create such, so I I'm aware of, we 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 had originally asked if we could have So, I, I'm aware of, we, we, we had originally asked if we could have some that are specifically for Everett educators. Unfortunately, it was a matter of funding. So, we were working with the city on that. I don't, I don't know that the city was opposed, it's just a matter of how these, these COVID testing sites are being funded and the fact that they have to be funded for the general public. So, my last understanding, just on the educator piece, I can't speak to the testing just for residents piece, but to the educator piece was that was actually something that was being worked on at the state level by Russell Johnson with their state contract to see if there was a way that they could have state sites specifically for educators. So, I don't know if that sheds any light on, I would imagine it's something similar for residents, but that's the extent of my knowledge. I do think it's a great idea, though, and something that we should explore.
Mr. Chairman, on that, I did send an email to Sabrina at the City Hall. I have not heard back from her. So, what I'd like to do is refer this to the mayor and to Sabrina, the Director of the Health Department, to see if we can put something in place and maybe she can get back to the superintendent along with us and let us know if we can set something up, either a location for Everett residents, so they're not waiting five hours or seven hours in a long, long line and, and get this done. You know, so I would like to make that a motion to refer it to the mayor and to Sabrina and to get back to the superintendent and to us as well.
If I can, my suggestion would be to, you know, refer this matter to the superintendent in her role as secretary to contact, you know, the mayor and Sabrina from the Board of Health.
So be it, thank you.
Okay. All right, great, motion is made and seconded to refer this matter to the superintendent. Can roll call vote, please.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pennerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, seven yays, zero nays. You have referred this to the superintendent. Mrs. Murray?
So, I just wanted to follow up with, on Cynthia's request, because I know that in other communities where there is, where the state has not been coming through with helping in COVID testing for students and staff in schools, some of the local clinics have been partnering with schools and offering to run bi-weekly or even monthly testing sites in the school, sort of like a mobile testing site, where they would come to the school and they would test either just staff in some cases, because you need parent permission to, to test students or staff and students if the students have parental permissions. So, I don't know if, how one would put that in the form of a motion, but can I make a motion that we investigate with all of the health partners located in the city of Everett, including the hospital, that perhaps we can investigate whether or not any of them would be willing to partner with the school system?
We already voted on the matter, so it's passed, so it's too late to amend, but
I meant in addition to, not, not in place of. Does that matter? I'm sorry.
You know,
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we, we should have both motions before us, before we voted. But, you know, but hey, listen, it's 2021. You know, you've only been around for 12 months. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to rescind my motion and to amend.
Why, thank you, Cynthia.
There we go, all right.
I do want to mention something on the motion before we go any further.
Sure, now's the time we'll put up debate.
Okay, I did get a, a message from Council McGlaughlin that they are working with also Council Martin to request, they did request to speak with the mayor to receive some dollars to fund this program for us as well. So, I just wanted to make a note on that, that I just received a message that they are working with the mayor to try to put something together for the Everett students and teachers and parents. So, hopefully, we can work together and get that done, thank you.
Okay, so on the motion as amended, which has been made and seconded to capture, you know, all the parties involved that Ms. Sarni and Mrs. Murray had mentioned, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pennerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Miss? Mr. Parker?
Yes, seven yays, zero nays, you have moved favorable action on item number one. Item number two reads, the Everett Public Schools accepts Mass General Law Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen A to create a reserve fund to pay for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs for special education, out-of-district tuition, or transportation. So, you know, being on the chair, I would entertain a motion to refer this matter to the Everett City Council.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so if a motion has been made and seconded to refer it to the Everett City Council, this matter is now open up for the debate or all questions. So, seeing no hands raised, if I could just simply explain, as you know, you know, as a school district, a public school district, we're not allowed to carry funds over from one year to another. Yes, we do have revolving accounts, but revolving accounts are very specific to that particular need, such as the cafeteria revolving account that we use on cafeteria expenses. So, with that, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this, especially from the description that the superintendent, Ms. Giant, gave as like Special Education Stabilization Fund. Now, we can set this up and, you know, if we do have the luxury of some extra money, especially as we move from one fiscal year to another, we can move these funds into that particular stabilization fund. The other thing I'm excited about this, this is actually would be considered a joint venture, because it needs the city council approval. And the way we set this up would actually need city council approval for the distribution of funds. The thing that really makes me excited about this is from time to time, we've heard that, well, if we take money from free cash, we could be impacting, yeah, the, the bond warning, the municipal, municipalities bond rating. In the research that Ms. Giant has done in, in the communities that she's talked to, this is actually seen as a positive as far as, you know, using it towards, you know, I guess assessing the community's bond rating. So, I think everything that we see here is a win-win. And with that, you know, please join me in voting for favorable action this, to send it to the city council for their approval. So, can I roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pennerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. So, we have seven yays, zero nays, you have passed this item. And of course, as always, Madam Superintendent, if you could copy us all on that communication, we'd appreciate it. Okay, the next item, number three, added submitted by school committee members. Their Public Schools endorses a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2020-21 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And this is sponsored by Mr. Barrows, Mrs. Lambert, Mrs. Murray, and me, Mike Parker.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so a motion was made and seconded for favorable action. I'll now open it up to any type of questions or debate.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows, and then Ms. Sarni.
Mr. Chairman, the reason that this moratorium is so important is that, you know, we are, as a district, we are, I shouldn't say the, I shouldn't use the word lucky, because no one is lucky these days in a pandemic, but we are, as the superintendent presented, presented, having a, a good number in terms of attendance. Still, there are a lot of students who are absent, students who, you know, are having a hard time with this remote learning, you know, COVID education has nothing to do with the Everett old schools per se, but in a pandemic, right? We are, we are living in a pandemic. So, when you add to that, that students need to be prepared for testing, you know, for NCAS, for this, for that, come on, right? Let's, 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 let's use reality here. It cannot be, it's very hard for me to be preparing myself in my, sometimes we have students who don't have desks to, to study. They are like, they are bad laptop from their lap, like, come on. So, that's why I believe this is very important. I know it's, it's, it's not gonna, no, it's not going to mandate that's enough to do anything, but at least we are sending our message that we are very concerned about this. And it shouldn't be, we shouldn't do that now, should, for that or hold.
Ms. Sarni, then Ms. Murray.
I'm off that, Mr. Barrows actually just explained what it was about, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Murray, then Mrs. Lambert.
The only thing I'd like to add to my colleagues' statements is that in the best of times, this standardized testing is questionable. And when we're going to discuss the fact that this is questionable anyway, the idea as a taxpayer and as a parent that we'd be spending money that we are fighting over on a regular basis in this city, because funds are so limited and resources are so limited, the idea of spending any of the state's money on standardized testing at this point in time seems outrageous and egregiously irresponsible to me. There are so many things that we could be spending this money on for our children that would be such a better use of our resources, both financial and material. And the fact that we're even having to ask this of our colleagues at the state level is quite honestly a little repulsive and repugnant to me. So, that's why I feel really strongly, in the best of times, that this is wasteful spending. But right now, in the middle of a pandemic, it's absolutely, absolutely absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I won't belabor the point. I think my colleague said it as well as I could, but there are already enough inequities built into high-stakes testing. And then when you add in the challenges that district like ours face and the resources it's taking, not only from our district, but for the teachers who are doing their very best, I mean, the work that our teachers are doing to keep our students engaged in learning, to add another element of pressure, really concerns me as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a resident, and just as a human. It, it's a lot to ask, so, you know, I, I, I ask for favorable, a favorable vote on this resolution, and I hope you'll support it again. It's, it's just to make a statement of our support and the principles we stand for, but I think it's important that we do so collectively.
Thank you. Ms. Sarni?
I would like to ask the, the support of my colleagues that if I'd like to have my name added to this piece, if possible, if, if you don't mind.
You know, even better, I entertain a motion that we add this as, well, okay, before I make the statement. So, we did vote on this as a body as part of the, the slate for the Mass Association of School Committees. So, we're, we're a record in that sense, but what happened was us foregone, approached by some local parents, and that's where the names came from. But you're absolutely right, this shouldn't be the entire body, Ms. Sarni. In the, in the, in, this is a matter of record that I would ask that gets sent to Representative McGonigal and Senator Dee Domenico. Spoke to the senator, he's on board, he's all in favor. In fact, he said that if we voted favorably on this, it would help him in his cause. So, with that, please make, make an amendment to add the entire body, please.
I'd like to make a motion, add the entire body.
Okay, so motion made and seconded to add the entire body, all those in favor, just say aye.
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 Okay, great. So, as amended, there is a motion to, for favorable action that's been seconded to accept this and send it to the Representative McGonigal and Senator Saldee Domenico. Can I roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, and I want my name in font size eighteen.
Mr. Pennerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I'm, I'm not going to try and be funny, yes. Seven yays, zero nays, we have moved for favorable action as amended as the entire body. Item number four, invite the members of the School Finance Task Force, Mr. John Fullerton, Mr. Barry R. Sloan, Dwayne Byron Thomas, and Samuel R. Taylor to revisit and review the report of December fourth, two thousand nineteen, with the school administration and the school committee. So, I need a motion to open up debate.
I'll make a motion. Favorable action.
Second.
Okay, motion was made and seconded for favorable action on this. Mr. Abazay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite frankly, it this is an item that I know is near and dear to yours and my heart. You know, as I try to look forward, it's very difficult, because this issue continues to haunt us as a school committee when, in my humble opinion, we are the body that took this task force report the most serious and implemented all, all the changes that we were asked. But quite frankly, to this day, there is still misinformation being quoted from this report that quite frankly, just was not true. And just a little while ago, I was speaking with Mr. Parker about one of these mistruths or misconceptions, and we sort of came to an agreement that why not revisit this task force? You know, and again, who knows? You know, my, my attitude is, you know, let the chips fall where they may. If they feel like we're not doing what we should be doing, that's fine, be happy to hear it. I'm not, I, I don't think we put this idea out there to get a pat on the back. What I'm looking for is I want from an independent group like these four fine gentlemen to basically state either we took this information that they gave us from the report and we actually did something about it, or that we, you know, if they feel we ignored it, I'd like to hear that also, because I personally believe and know in my heart that the, if they revisit it and review what we've done since that December fourth, two thousand nineteen report, I believe we will get a positive response from them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abazay. Mrs. Murray? All set?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, points, if I can, from the chair? And, and, and trust me, this year I will try to speak less from the chair. But you know, some of you know, I'm a salesman, right? I supply components in some very, very critical applications that lead to the defense of this country. When I make a mistake or my company makes a mistake, we're held accountable. We do what they call a corrective action report, and we have to, you know, And we have to, you know, define root cause and what the corrective action is gonna be. The last component of that is called, you know, objective evidence, right? Proving to the client that you did what you said you were gonna do. So I I I'm looking at this report in that type of scope. By inviting these gentlemen back and looking at what the real recommendations were as opposed to what the suggestions were. And showing them, you know, what we've done and, you know, is this susceptible? Um, do you see any other faults that might lie that we can fix? Obviously, we're we're this is the same line as. You know, contracts with open architectures, but something like this, invite them back and have them see what we've done. As Mr. Abraze, Abraze said, open ourselves up to criticism, it's open kimono, and it's just gonna make us better. I mean, I think we've done a. Some 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 great things over the last twenty-four months and we should be proud of that. And with that, we should invite these gentlemen back to see. Uh, what the new Everett story is about. And so with that, you know. Mr. Lasting, can we have a roll call vote, please, for favorable action?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sonny?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Okay, before I before I call the vote, Mrs. Murray, do you have a question? I saw that finger go up again.
Yeah, you did. It was because Cynthia has her fingers up, actually.
Okay. Cynthia, I'm sorry, Ms. Sonny?
Yes, on the motion, I just wanted to make sure that if we invite the um, the guests, that we put them first, that we don't wait, make them wait. So if we know they're coming and they're on, that we can take them out of order. Before our meeting.
Agreed. I I would think this should actually be, if if they do accept our invitation to come back, this is probably more of an art. More of a process, I would expect that it would interview people, revisit data, revisit reports. Uh, but of course, yes, we would do that.
Okay, thank you.
So motions were made, the vote has been taken, it's seven a's, zero nays, we have moved for favorable action. And the secretary, uh, Minister Lieutenant will reach out to those gentlemen and then uh. See if they uh, they wanna come back. So, um. So that's it for tonight's calendar is published. Um, I will extend this out, you know, we did not have our year-end meeting in two thousand twenty. You know, as far as public notice goes, and usually at that year-end meeting, you know, we all get to say a few words around the holidays and the new year. And with that didn't happen, I didn't know if anybody here wanted to say something uh, to the public. You know, yeah, thank you, Mrs. Murray.
Well, as as a brand new politician, not a politician. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the residents and families of Everett. For giving me your vote of confidence that I would do the best I could for your children. It is my intention every time I'm preparing for one of these meetings, every time I'm in one of these meetings. And every time I debrief after one of these meetings, to always have all of our children in the forefront of my mind. And I just want to say that when I started this journey, it was pretty intimidating. And that my colleagues on this committee with me. Um, have made that easier and that they've welcomed me with open arms and they've worked really hard. To help this educator, not a politician, get a little bit sharper and better at being a politician and. Have helped me smooth some of my rough edges and have let me keep some of my rough edges. So thank you all for just letting me continue to serve in this capacity. And thank you for supporting me and helping me get better, both at my craft, at my job and here. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Um, and I just wanted to say, you know, I likewise, we we had. A few new faces on the school committee and a bit of a learning curve, and I definitely started with. Some different priorities than where we ended up with. You know, we started off with Student Opportunity Act and, you know. A new superintendent, it it was, you know, there was so so many aspirations I had. But I feel like we've gained just as much as we would have in lessons learned, in resiliency and flexibility. Our students, I've I've appreciated, you know. Their willingness to reach out, just to have students reach out and ask about things that are on a school committee agenda, to me, that's amazing. Our families for trusting me, for being okay with yelling at me at times, that's okay too. You know, it's it's when we are all fighting for our children, those passions are one hundred percent, I get it. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank my colleagues, Mr. Abraze, Mr. Parker. You were nothing but phenomenal and welcoming and patient as we learned, you know. Through through you to the speaker and, you know, all these little little pieces that. Were aren't quite natural, but you made it easy and I appreciate your patience and. Your flexibility with us and thank you again. And so I I look forward to two thousand twenty-one. I think we'll just continue. I I I think progress was sped up a little bit, and I think, you know, as long as we remember that. Um, we could make the best of it. So I look forward to another great year with all of you and all of our families and students.
Yeah, and just before, I just wanted to thank the parents and the public for um. Being patient and it wasn't easy decisions this this committee had to make, but I want to thank them for supporting us. And as always, um. I don't consider myself a politician, I never did. I always said, we're just here for the kids. We're not here to. We're not here to ask people to death to give them the answers they want. And we're here to support the kids of Everett, and I think this whole board. One of the finest put together, I love working with all he is, and. We always said in the best, and I think Mr. Eel, I used to say it the best, he said, everybody bring something special to the table. We all have our specialties and we wouldn't be able to function as a group if everyone didn't have that. You know, the specific specialties that interest them, and all together, though, we make a a great committee. I want to thank everybody here who's on this committee. I want to thank the parents too for just being so supportive of the decisions. Um, my new superintendent, Taliani, has made and, you know, we have to go with it. I mean, we're making the best we can, and as always, like I said before, this is for the interests of the kids, nobody else. And whether people like it or not, that's what we're here for. We're here for the decisions of the kids, to make them, give them the best education we can. With the best we have. And I just want to thank all the parents and. All the teachers, the administrators who have put, you know, a lot of hard work and just has not been an easy year. And it's not over yet, but they continue to surprise me and and it's really no not surprising because they're all so talented. I couldn't do it happily, so I really couldn't. So I want to thank everyone, parents, the city of Everett. Um, the mayor, everybody who's in support of us and helping us move forward with this with this difficult year. Hopefully, we see a little light at the end of the tunnel a couple of months. Thank you very much, and I hope everyone had a great holiday.
Mr. Abraze?
I I yield to Mr. Barrows because he's one of my favorites.
You you sure you want to follow up to that? Mr. Barrows?
No, everyone already thanked everyone that should be thanked. Our, you know, our educators, but also all of EPS staff members. There is not a single one that, you know, doesn't like wake up every day and think what. How best they're gonna do for our for our kids and for our families. So I wanna uh, thank each each one of them. Now, our custodians, our our professionals, our secretaries, our, you name it. Uh, support staff, everyone, 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 administrators and and everyone. But I wanna, no, it's it's funny that Mr. Brazil and I were the last ones to to. I believe the last one should speak because I really want to thank him. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Abraze. He has been the. Chair of the school committee in a such difficult time. Uh, not only in a time of a pandemic, but in a pre-pandemic, which is. Hiring a new superintendent for Everett. It's not only hire a new superintendent, is hiring a superintendent for Everett. And those who are from Everett and not from Everett. Knows that it's an extra mile to hire a superintendent for Everett. And and, you know, he took hit, his family, he was harassed. I mean, there is a list of things that we don't want to remember. And and he always stood, you know, his ground and. Led us uh, and led the superintendent search process, which. I'm very thankful that he uh, had me as part of it, but also members of the community, everyone. And, you know, as it was not enough in that difficult year, we came to a second year. And then we were hit by a pandemic. So you had a new superintendent starting in March. And a few weeks later, she had to close the schools. Uh, how fun is that, right? So I believe Mr. Abraze's gray hair has been added few more. Since he became chair of the Everett School Committee. Or he lost some, but I just want to thank him. For for leading us in, even in the middle of politics, which sometimes people. Keep their minds in politics instead of educating kids, which is sad. Uh, so, and I wanna, you know, last but not least, uh, thank our. Families and tell them that we are in this together. We know uh, parents are at home desperate because they don't know what to do with their kids. They don't want to go to the parent, uh, to the e-learning centers. Uh, they don't want to be in a computer, they miss their their classmates. Parents have to work, I mean, it's it's not easy to uh, to anyone. And and for them to know that we that we hear them, we hear their voices, we hear their pain, we we share their pain. Uh, as well, uh, but we are in this together and I I I am hopeful. That in this new year, we're gonna go through these and we're gonna succeed and we're gonna come out of this uh, stronger. Uh, that's 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 my my real hope and and I firmly believe on this, so. Thank you so much once again.
Ms. Sonny? Oh, I'm sorry.
I yield again.
Tom, because I thought I was your favorite, but now I'm 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 little.
You're you're only my favorite when it comes to putting together the committees.
I I was gonna make a comment, that long as Marconi and Millie are on these committees with me. We're good to go.
We can make that happen.
Uh, think twice, Frank. But I do want to say, my colleagues hit it on the, hit it on the, what do you say, the um, bell that. I want to thank everybody. You know, from custodians to the teachers, to the parents, the superintendent, her staff. You know, it's a very stressful time for everyone, from working from home, working at work, school. And I just want to tell everybody and the parents to hang in there, because if we can do this and beat this, we can beat anything. And there's gonna be a better tomorrow, and hopefully, it's gonna be soon. So I want to say thank you to everyone. And Tom, I want to thank you for serving the last year and guiding us as. Samantha and Dana both said, as myself learning and being new on the school committee, and I'm still learning a lot of things. I thank you and Frank and Marconi and Alan. Helping me and teaching me along the ways and Millie, so I appreciate that. So thank you, everyone.
Mr. Abraze?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody for the kind words. What I especially wanted to do is I wanted to thank. Uh, each and every one of you, uh, the past year. Uh, it was funny, Frank sent me an email the other day comparing the years, and I explained to him it wasn't even close. Uh, my second year, even with the pandemic, I just thought it was so much better, maybe it was. The the changes uh, all around, the school committee members, the new school committee. Uh, the new superintendent, I mean, everything. With the pandemic, I thought this past year was a better year than the previous year, so. You can take from that uh, what you will, but again, I want to thank each and every one of you for. Uh, your respect. I I don't know how it played out because I feel like. Maybe I was just getting the hang of being the chairman as I finished up the last meeting, so uh, you know. That's sort of how it went. So if you, believe me, if you learned anything from me, I I feel I learned a lot more from you. Uh, Marconi, again, thank you so much for the kind words and. I just want to say that looking back on my two years, it was. Uh, again, it was purely accidental that I became the chairman. As I try to tell my kids, and now I'm telling my grandchildren. I believe everything happens in life for a reason. Looking back on it, again, don't want to rehash it, but just to everybody out there. And and this has a lot to do with you, uh, school committee members, the. New superintendent and her staff. I wouldn't change anything that's happened in the past two years. As far as uh, my chairmanship goes, and again. Everything, the love and respect that you showed me, believe me, right back at all of you. It's been uh, my pleasure and my honor uh, to serve with you and uh, again. Like everybody else has said, uh, hopefully better things are coming. We hang in there. Uh, we're gonna beat this and, but again, to all of you, thank you so much for everything you did. It for me. Again, thank you.
Minister Superintendent, a couple of words before my battery runs out?
Sure, I'm sure people are tired of hearing me talk. My presentations are always so long and filled with thanks for our entire community. Uh, but I I I just wanna, um, I say the same thing. I just, I, this has been an incredible year. And I was asked that same thing, is which was better, my two thousand nineteen or my two thousand twenty, and even as a new superintendent during a pandemic. My two thousand twenty was well surpassed my my two thousand nineteen, and I just feel so blessed to be part of this community. I've met so many amazing people. I just feel so incredibly lucky to be here and. And to be um, able to serve this community. It is like the greatest, the greatest honor I could ever have and. And because of all of those people, because of all of you on this call, because of our families, because of our students, because of our incredible staff. Like I I don't, my two thousand twenty would not have with a pandemic been. Nearly as good without this en- entire community, you know, wrapped around me and wrapped around, um, you know, the schools. It's just been overwhelming uh, in in a good way. So thank you.
Thank you. And if I could, and first of all, Tom, thank you. Uh, this community will never know, nor have the opportunity to appreciate what you've done over the last couple of years. Um, you know, of course, you know, um, this stuff that we know that was sworn to secrecy, and if we told you, we have to kill you. But it's it's been unbelievable and I'm forever grateful. Uh, second of all, I want to thank everybody that put together the Zoom meetings, uh, the TV studio. Over the past, you know, ten months, we've gone from live to remote to live to remote again, and we've done it seamlessly. No interruptions. Uh, you know, good product, week after week, bi-weekly after bi-weekly. And our viewership and our engagement with the public has increased uh, by leaps and bounds. Well, I want to thank the the staff for their performance and their dedication. Uh, like I got to um, thank my wife early. I want to thank. The spouses and significant others and best friends of every staff member out there, because it's because of you. You know, backing up um, that special person in your life, that helps motivate them and gets them through, you know, what's been going on. Um, you can't measure that, you just can't measure that. And lastly, Mrs. Lambert brought up the Student Opportunity Act. A year ago, Governor Baker's budget came out, um, we were being budgeted at seven million dollars over and above. Foundation. So if you remember the the debate going into the. Student Opportunity Act, when they looked at the prior funding formula, they found that Everett, depending on which one you read. Was underfunded by over ten to fifteen million dollars a year. Not to nobody's fault, just that that was the formula. So when you hear us consistently talk about three hundred thousand dollars or five hundred. So when you hear us consistently talk about $300,000 or $580,000 in port and $71,000, the reason being is, is because we are underfunded by 10 to 15 million dollars a year. Even the Student Opportunity Act, which was $7 million on the governor's budget, that was not fully funded. And that's something, of course, we know that, you know, Senator D. Domenico is, is, is working on. So when you ask us, what do you need? We're going to tell you, we need $15 million. So, and that's where it all stems from. So I want to thank you all for your time. I want to thank you for listening. And I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for adjournment. If we have a roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Abrazay?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarny?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Thank you. We have adjourned.
Good night, folks.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.